Regular session. Mr. Frazier? Oops, never mind. Okay, we're gonna stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. How's that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need to get my glasses fixed. Okay, I need an approval of the minutes. If everybody's seen the minutes, I need a motion. Thank you, Mr. -- thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by -- sorry, wrong meeting. Go ahead, roll call. I run so many meetings. Go ahead.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Isgro?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes. I don't believe we have anybody from City Council here. We have updates from First Bridgeport and Brookwood. So, Mike?
Yes, good evening. Tonight, we have reports from two of our buildings, as is a tradition here in Hamilton. We invite them once a year. And I want to invite up Stephanie Oaks and Becky Davis from Bridgeport, and they are going to give us an update on the exciting things that are going on at Bridgeport Elementary.
All right, good evening. Thank you, thank you guys for having us. So, I am Stephanie Oaks. I am the principal at Bridgeport. I've had the pleasure to meet many of you. And this is Becky Davis, my assistant principal. And we just want to thank you guys for having us tonight and thank so many of our staff members for being here to support all the great things that we're doing at Bridgeport. So, our theme this year is growing greatness. And you can ask any of our staff members that growth is really what we're focusing on. And that's growing in many ways. So, we are focusing on growing our students. We want to grow them academically, which you'll see aligns to our building goals. We also want to grow them behaviorally and socially. But in addition to that, we're also working on growing our staff members in their craft and then growing ourselves as administrators and as a new team of leadership. So, this summer, we had the pleasure of taking our building leadership team on a summer retreat. We took them to Miami University's Markham Center, where we really focused on building as an instructional team and building our communication skills as the leaders of our building. At that time, we focused on Bridgeport's One Plan. So, our One Plan was where we were able to identify our goals for the year and really narrow down, what are we going to do in order to meet those goals? So, we examined a lot of different data. We looked at not just our Bridgeport data, but our building data to see, I'm sorry, the district data as well, to identify where are we at. So, coming from years of COVID, all of the different factors that were in our building and knowing that we now have a new team in the building, what is the best way to move forward? So, our team was very committed, and they came back for a part two. And they came to Bridgeport over the summer as well, where we outlined our building system of supports. So, that is what we called our building-wide system at Bridgeport, where we focus on PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, which you'll be hearing more about this evening. So, Bridgeport's One Plan is specifically our goals. Our first goal is to improve growth and achievement for all students and for all staff. So, our philosophy really is if we continue to focus on growth, so that growing greatness, then the achievement is going to come because we know as we continue to grow, the achievement continues to rise. In addition to that, each of our teachers, they're aware of that, and we have a common understanding that every single student at Bridgeport is going to grow a minimum of one year in both math and reading. But also know that there are some kids that are coming to us below grade level. So, we are aiming for a year and a half for those students so we can begin to close gaps, which is how we will get to that increase in achievement. Our second goal is 100% implementation of PBIS. And so, you'll see a lot of the work that we have done with PBIS is aimed at reducing those negative behaviors in the building by focusing on those positive behaviors. So, there are six different pillars that are listed here, and these are all the different things that we have focused on this year that you're going to hear about that are the actions we are taking in order to achieve our One Plan.
Hello. In order to grow our learning community, we host daily grade-level team chats where we model our collaboration in our pods for students. So, the teachers come out, and they're covered by our special area teachers. And then, we have discussions about data and other initiatives going on in the building. So, it's been a great time to discuss strengths and challenges and to really dig into some things and grow as a team together. We've also been focusing on student engagement in the classroom and around the building. So, our math coach has put up some different mathematical mindset examples around the building where students can stop and really think about, like, how many triangles am I seeing? You know, trying to figure out problems. And they always enjoy stopping by those in the hallway to check them out as they travel around the building. We have also built student collaboration with our K-6 Reading Buddies Program, and we've been engaging in learning walks with our building coaches and curriculum and instruction leadership, and Stephanie and myself. So, Stephanie mentioned the Bridgeport System of Behavioral Supports. And so, this came from work that was done as an administrative team with our building leadership team this summer and at the beginning of the school year. So, we wanted to build a plan that had structure, common language, and common expectations that were all built around what we call the Bobcat Way. So, that is where we ask students to be respectful, responsible, and be problem solvers. And then, that is defined all around the building. What does that look like in each location, each of those three things? So, we built this system, and we had some positive behavior supports in place, such as our class dojo points, where students get points for positive behavior seen around the building that relate to the Bobcat Way. There are also classroom incentives, like Team Paw Prides, where when classes are showing the Bobcat Way, they can get a Team Paw Pride. So, there is, you can see on the picture here, these little flower pots where we keep track of increments of how many Team Paw Prides classes have gotten. And when they reach certain benchmarks, the class as a whole decides what incentive they're going to get, and the teacher celebrates that with them. We also have individual awards called Cool Cats, where people can give out these tickets around the building for students who are showing the Bobcat Way. And on Fridays, we have drawings. So, we draw from this, you know, tub of Cool Cats, and you can come down, and sometimes you get a token for the book vending machine or a LaRosa's Pizza coupon, sometimes PBIS prizes. We've had all kinds of different things. So, it's really been a popular incentive in the building. And last, we also have positive office referrals. So, teachers can refer students to get a certificate signed by the principal and their name read on the announcements for, again, showing the Bobcat Way. And it's outlined what specifically they were doing. They can take that certificate home to celebrate with their families. So, we believe a lot of these systems are helping us have some of these great results so far. We've had 111 positive office referrals this year. We have also had a reduction. This reflects our sixth-grade office referrals from last year to this year, comparing the same amounts of time. 32% reduction in office referrals. And we'll talk about this more on the next slide. But we've had an increase in the number of students who achieved the dojo building incentives from October to November. So, when students didn't earn it in November, they were motivated to improve behavior to then achieve it the next month. So, what I was just referring to are our PBIS incentive programs. So, with our dojo points, if you have 90% positive, 90% of your dojo points are positive for the certain month, you get to participate in the incentive that's held a couple of days after the month ends. So, our Student Family Support Specialist puts out a survey for students in the building, everyone, to vote on what incentive they want. So, then, they know for the entire month what they're working toward. And you can see some of the ones that we've been able to put into place this year. So, we couldn't have done that without our partners and our school staff. So, we have people who are popping up popcorn. We have First Baptist Church of Hamilton. Lauren Sprague was popping popcorn. We have donations from Culvers. We have our Bridgeport staff who are helping support extra recesses. So, we really make it a building effort, and we really try to match the language of, okay, what's your dojo percentage? Like, how are you going toward this month's incentive? And then, we also encourage staff members to write shout-outs for each other. When they get a shout-out, Stephanie and I take the snack cart around, and we read the shout-out to their class, and then, they get to pick something from the cart. So, another important part of our strong, building a strong school community involves growing leadership in our students. So, there are several leadership opportunities that we have at Bridgeport. We have the Bobcat Council for fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, where they run things in the building, like recycling, food drives. They volunteer, and they're considered leaders in the building. We have peer tutoring, where sixth graders lead math and reading tutoring sessions for other Bridgeport students. And then, Safety Patrol. They assist in maintaining school safety, including monitoring the Bobcat Way and assisting students at arrival and dismissal. So, social-emotional learning is something else that we're really excited about at Bridgeport. We've been lucky to use a program called Second Step. And this is one way that we're building a multi-tiered system of behavioral supports for our students. So, Second Step is a holistic approach for building supportive communities for all children through social-emotional learning. So, using it, we can give students the language that they need to interact with each other in an appropriate way. So, they're starting to use this language in the building. So, for example, the other day, fifth graders used a lesson and followed a template where they were kind of identifying maybe problem areas for themselves during the school day. Both classes identified the same 15-minute chunk of the cafeteria time where they saw the same behaviors. They weren't even like together when they did this. And they were like, we really see these things happening. And they identified them, and then, they said, can we have you guys, to the teachers, take this to Mrs. Oaks and Mrs. Davis so we can try to problem solve this? And that all came from using the Second Step curriculum. We've also rolled out calming corners this year. This is where students can use tools to identify the emotions they're feeling, and then, they can use strategies to use when they're tackling feelings that can feel overwhelming.
So, that last pillar is community involvement. So, in my three years being at Bridgeport, I was never fortunate enough to have the community come in because of COVID. So, this has been the first year where I have been able to experience community events at the building. And it just takes everything to the next level. So, so far this year, we invited our families to participate in the Homecoming Parade. We've also hosted a trunk-or-treat, as well as a Bridgeport Express, which is a holiday event, kind of a play on Polar Express. We also are currently planning a grandparents' day to invite our grandparents in during Right to Read Week, as well as a spring fling dance. So, finding those opportunities to increase the engagement in our building from the community. Our Parent Teacher Council, our PTC, has been a big part in helping make this happen. Throughout COVID, we didn't have a lot of engagement in our PTC. So, Mrs. Davis and I have worked really hard to try to re-establish that group. And I'm excited that we now have a stable group of parents. It has increased in the number. And we also have staff members that are regularly attending those meetings to support that relationship between the school, the community, and the families. We are also, excuse me, are continuing to build our partnerships so that we can increase our community involvement. So, we are working with Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Inspiring Hope Church, YMCA, and various other community entities in order to continue to improve. So, what's in store for next school year? So, we are going to continue to focus on academics, behavior, social-emotional, and community learning. What you see here is our overall plan, but we aren't trying to change our goals. We are moving in the right direction, and we're going to take our goals and dive deeper into them so that we can continue to meet that growth for all students academically, behaviorally, and socially. So, we want to thank you guys because you've invited us here tonight, and you continue to support us. And as you heard from Mrs. Davis at Bridgeport, we give out those Cool Cats. When we see something positive, we like to say something. Because it is January, which is School Board Appreciation Month, we have brought for you an honorary Cool Cat. Because, being specific, we just appreciate all the support that you provide to the staff, the students, and the community in Hamilton.
Oh, that's -- Thank you. Oh, thank you. Well, thank you for the presentation. And always, like I've always said, this is my favorite part of the meeting, to see all of the creativity, the positive reinforcement that you're giving our kids. And it's hard work, and we know that, and we appreciate it. So, thank you so much for sharing what's going on at Bridgeport with us.
Thank you.
Both of my grandchildren have, well, one's getting ready to go to the seventh grade next year, but they've been there since preschool. And they've, and I think you do a great job at Bridgeport. And by the way, you don't think I'm not going to tease both of them for this, so, but thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo that. And it was fun making popcorn for you guys. And amazing how many people come out of the woodwork when you're serving up popcorn. But I really like that you're bringing the parents back in because I know that it has been a difficult, especially at Bridgeport, with COVID and everything going on and getting parents to be part of the educational process. I like how you're developing strategies that fit your school. It's not a, you know, cookie cutter type of thing. It's for your school. And getting the community involvement. You're up there sort of out of the way. A lot of people don't know where you are, but it's great opportunities in our community to work with you guys. So, I want to thank you very much. Thanks for all the work you're doing over there.
Thank you.
Same, I appreciate you guys coming and being presenting tonight. And thank you for confirming that I'm a Cool Cat. I so appreciate that. Now, the world knows. So, but yeah, you guys do great work. I'm glad you were able to experience the community partnership and the love that everybody has for our schools and just in general, how when there's a call that goes out of a need or just a participation, that they come to want to, you know, aid and just be a part of serving and making sure that it's met. And I love the fact that you guys give the positive reinforcement to the kids with the shout-outs and rewarding them with the books and stuff. So, I think it's just a great work that you guys are doing. So, I just applaud you guys and thank you again for being here and presenting and just allowing us to just take a peek inside of what's going on in your building and on a day-to-day and giving us that Reader's Digest version. So, greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Think one -- This is my favorite part of our board meetings. We actually get to see what's going on in the buildings and hear from the administrators in the building. We get reports a lot, and I mean, it's all been positive with your building. Guys are doing a great job over there. Great presentation tonight. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I think one of the things to recognize is that Stephanie and Becky are both in their first year in the positions they're currently in over at Bridgeport. And for the last six months, they have really set a foundation. And I think you're hearing a reoccurring theme with all of these presentations. And it focuses around growth and community. This district is so important to this community, and we are involved in just a myriad of different ways. And you just heard a couple of different ways that Brookwood, or I'm sorry, Bridgeport is tonight. And you're going to hear the same from Brookwood. But it's also the growth piece. How do you grow students? And it's not just academically, from a maturity standpoint, from all of these different things. You know, the experiences in that that we give students and the focus that we have on growth, you're hearing that reoccurring theme over and over again. And it's so refreshing to hear that focus. And I want to publicly thank both of you for your leadership this year. And, you know, I'm excited to see what the future holds. Thank you both.
Thank you.
The second presentation we have this evening is from Brookwood Elementary. And tonight, we have Eileen Ernst. And her first year as principal at Brookwood. And we have Whitney Conrad. And she is in her second year as assistant principal at Brookwood. And I think they brought an audience of, I don't know, many for this presentation this evening. Eileen?
Well, thank you so much for having our Brookwood team here tonight. My name is Eileen Ernst. I'm the principal at Brookwood. I'd also like to introduce our team that's here with me tonight. We have Whitney Conrad, our assistant principal, Nikki Jaleel, our math coach, and Brittany Galbraith, our literacy coach. So, our two main goals this school year focus on academic growth and then strengthening our school culture. Since I am new to Brookwood this year, these focused areas came out of conversations from last year with Ms. Conrad and Ms. Hazlitt, as well as making sure that we are aligning to district goals. We reviewed our academic and discipline data from last school year, and a lot of staff feedback. So, we had a retreat in August where we were able to talk about all of the data pieces, our goals and everything with our staff, as well as working very closely with our instructional coaches. Tonight, our team is going to dive a little bit deeper into the highlighted action items up there. We're going to talk more about the targeted coaching support, positive behavior intervention and supports, and then, staff recognition.
Good evening. Our current coaching model is one of two coaches in each elementary building. So, we have an ELA math, or an ELA coach in Brookwood and a math coach in Brookwood. And we are there on a daily basis to support our teachers and our students' learning. Our job as an instructional coach is to take our knowledge and expertise and in turn, support our teachers. What we don't know, we will work to find out. By building relationships with our teachers, we work closely with them on a plethora of educational areas, from the use of best practices and data-driven instruction to intentional risk-taking that will lead to growing our students. We serve as a sounding board to help teachers navigate the daily ins and outs of teaching. We strive to help our teachers perfect their craft, which will ultimately help our students grow. When our teachers succeed, our students succeed, and that is our goal. Our role as coaches varies from teacher to teacher based on needs. As you can see from the pictures in the slides, we work closely with our teachers in planning lessons, modeling lessons. We break down data to both guide instructions and help create small groups. We take teachers on visits to classrooms, both in their building as well as other buildings in the district, to expand their knowledge and then further their own craft. We offer professional development that helps support our district goals. And we work collaboratively through reflective coaching cycles to hone in on specific areas of growth for our teachers and so much more. Based on the work done at Fairwood last year using a coaching cohort, we decided at Brookwood to implement a coaching cohort. Essentially, by joining this cohort, teachers committed to regular meetings with their coaches throughout the school year. These meetings are teacher-guided, and that we begin by asking the teacher where his or her area of focus lies. What do they want to work on? Once we establish the areas of focus, we hit the ground running, both with modeling, observing lessons, planning lessons, videotaping, reflecting, and analyzing all pieces of the academic puzzle. As you can see from our data, we feel our cohort has been pretty successful this year. Given the number of teachers who have joined and the number of meetings we have had with our teachers, we are diligently working to meet our teachers where they are. By collaboratively working together, we are able to impact student learning through a multitude of educational practices, from helping with the planning of small groups to increasing in student engagement. As coaches, we are, deep down, teachers at heart. We recognize and understand the effect that our position has for our teachers and for our students. We are very blessed to have an opportunity such as this to impact so many. We are grateful to our board and to our administration not only for recognizing the need for the role of instructional coaches, but also for giving the daily support necessary for us to be successful. So, in that, we say thank you.
So, in planning at Brookwood, our team is careful to keep our building goals in mind. Culture is a driving force for us, not just in PBIS, but also in the instructional arena. We want to build a culture of feedback. Feedback between our team, our teachers, feedback between coaches and teachers, and feedback between colleagues. We also want our decisions to remain data-focused. With these considerations in mind, we've planned instructional walks and learning walks. Instructional walks allow our team to have a common classroom experience while learning walks are completed one-on-one with a coach in the classroom or an admin in the classroom. These systems allow us to see classrooms and plan meaningful PD and support through coaching. Using a Google Doc, our teachers receive feedback almost in real time. These two types of classroom visits allow us to be visible to teachers and students. This is crucial in establishing a feeling of support for our teachers, especially with 50% of us coming into the building this year. We are most proud, what we're most proud about this process is that 93% of our teachers felt they received helpful feedback from this practice. And that's a big deal because when you're a teacher and you're allowing someone in your room, you want it to feel meaningful. We've also made a conscious effort to foster collaboration. This collaboration happens in many forms. This may be collaboration with coaches one-on-one or in grade-level teams, vertical collaboration in literacy, math, PBIS, or our BLT committees. We also work to schedule collaborative visits between buildings and other classrooms so teachers can see instruction outside the walls of their classroom. To show our commitment to working together, we partnered with Crawford Woods administrators and coaches to plan professional development. And you can see that in some of those pictures there. This work centered around tiered levels of instruction and standards-based planning. Often, teachers ask to meet with other teachers who teach their grade outside of their building. This made that a reality, for their highlighting for our teachers that we do indeed hear and value their input.
It's awesome to hear from our coaches about the intention and the variety of areas that they work to support in. It's even better to hear from some of our teachers about the impact that it has had so far this year. Let's take a look at what some of our teachers had to say.
I truly value having the coaches here to work with us. I feel like the coaches are helping me stay current with teaching practices, which is important because it helps buy students' growth.
We have worked together to organize small group materials as well as using the data to make meaningful small groups so I can help students in the areas that they are struggling.
Coaching has had a huge impact on us. Especially this year, we have been given a class that has a lot of needs. And Nikki has been nothing short of amazing. We can come to her with any problem whatsoever, come to her with any problem whatsoever and she is willing to listen, problem-solve, try and fix it, find answers for us. The students love, we're lucky she has her room right next door to us, so the students love that the math lady is right next door and will pop in a new fun, exciting math game. And she really gets them excited in thinking about math.
And then with Brittany Galbraith, she came in and she was helping with her middle-of-the-year phonics testing. And on Tuesday morning, she's going to help me analyze the data and we're going to come up with strategies together of how to work with some of the weaknesses and strengths in my reading focus groups. And that should really have a positive impact on my students' learning. So I really appreciate all of their help they're giving.
Nikki has also helped me to organize observations at other schools, so I can observe other teachers and take away meaningful things and implement them into my classroom.
So since we have implemented small groups with the help of Nikki in our math instruction, we've been able to see such a growth in students. So we've seen them growing just in the classroom and then also now that we've done our winter math test, we've been able to see that growth as well. So we're really excited.
Just like Nikki said earlier, I just want to say what an impact it's been to have the coaches in the building, to collaborate with them, and also just that extra support for our teachers has been phenomenal. We're going to move on next to PBIS, so Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports. As you mentioned earlier, it is my second year as the AP at Brookwood. So last year, what I was able to do is kind of take it all in as far as getting to know the staff, the students, the families, and receiving feedback on where we were at as a building and where the staff and where the students needed to go next. So with my observations and feedback, I was able to, especially over the summer, sit down with Eileen and talk about where we want to go next for this school year. So what we did in August before teachers officially came back was we had our PBIS retreat where a lot of our committee members attended, but then we also had teachers volunteer and come because they wanted to be a part of this. So during our retreat, and you will see a picture of that, we have a lot of teachers in the cafeteria. And throughout the day, we spent a lot of time talking about what we want to do for this school year as far as goals and what we are wanting to do to be able to provide a little more structure throughout the building. So something that we did as a team was create the first two weeks of school. So it was kind of a universal lesson plan that all teachers use with the students, focusing on classroom management strategies, their plans within the classroom, and also talking about building-wide expectations, what that looks like throughout the entire building, whether it be in the cafeteria, out on the playground, or just in the hallways. Another thing that we also did here is really focus on discipline data, where we were at last year, and what that's going to look like this year. So we really honed in on classroom personal referrals versus office referrals. So really talking about what can be managed in the classroom and using that as more of a stronger communication piece with teacher and home versus when you send a kid to the office. And so I feel like that has been very helpful this year throughout the building. And you will see on the slides, there's pictures and what we've done as admin. We've met with every grade-level team every quarter to discuss building-wide data with discipline, as well as just individual grade-level data to talk about that with students. So they are aware of where we are at and making goals for the next quarter. As far as PBIS with our students to help with that positive culture, we've done a lot of things this year, such as, we just opened last year, it's called the Brookmart, and students, what they do throughout the building, if they are modeling positive behavior in the classroom or throughout the building, they will earn a Brookwood buck. And they save those up to go to the Brookmart, and that is every other week. And they absolutely love having that experience. They look forward to it. It's very motivating for them. And this year, we actually started something called the Brookwood Bucks Blitz. And we did that right before a break. That's the time where they are excited, they're ready to have that break. So it was kind of an extra motivator for them. And teachers overall felt that they did see positive behaviors throughout that week, and they found that the students were more motivated until the very last day. So we do plan to do that again right around state testing to help with that motivation. And you will also see, we do a lot of other positives. Just like Bridgeport mentioned, the book vending machines are very popular in Hamilton right now. And our kids love it. And what I love about it is the students love being recognized on the announcements with that positive office referral. We also talk about what they received the referral for as it's modeling that for the rest of the student body. And they get to come down and they get to choose a book of their choice. And they love taking it back to their class and celebrating. But also some other things that we're doing with teachers, just to focus on relationships and positives with students, our behavior plans in the classroom, checking in with students. But something else I also love doing this year is having teachers come down with a student and me being able to model that restorative approach with them, so they can take that back to the classroom. With all of these things, if you want to go to the next slide, we just did a quick comparison of discipline data from last year, where we were with office referrals and suspensions, and where we are now. This was something that was very important to me, with me being there last year and making those goals of where we want to take the building. And our biggest goal overall is our students in school, they are in the classrooms, they are getting that instruction, we are filling those gaps, and they are growing. So as you can see, we had a little under 250 office referrals for the first semester last year. And you will see for the first semester this year, we had a little over 100. And you will see that suspensions, they drastically declined, where we had right below 50. And first semester this year, we had four. So as a building, we're really proud of where we're going, and I'm excited to continue this and see where we go at the end of the semester.
We know school culture, how our building feels, goes beyond just students and to our staff and families as well. We have worked to intentionally focus on staff culture and support, especially as a new admin team in a building where changing administrators has become the norm. We want to make sure that our staff feels seen, heard, valued, and appreciated. We started a few new things this year and also brought back a few staff favorites from the past. As you can see in the pictures, we started a staff shout-out board. So even though it sounds like something small, it's an opportunity where staff can recognize each other for both big and small things. In another one of the pictures, there's the blue board that features shout-outs to our staff from our families. So we send out a Google form once a quarter to where parents and families have an opportunity to share some positives with our staff, too. That's a favorite in our staff lunchroom. We have our monthly sunshine cart. That's a revived favorite from the past. And we also started blue tickets for staff drawings. Our families and our PTO have been awesome in supporting both of these with donations. We've taken some time at staff meetings to recognize positives in each other, as well as making sure not to forget our custodians, our bus drivers, and our cafeteria staff with thank-yous as well for all that they do for our school community. Ms. Conrad and I understand that it takes more than stuff to make sure that our staff feel valued and heard. We also do monthly staff surveys to get honest feedback about what's going well and what we need to fix. These have truly become essential to our practices at Brookwood. So I just talked a bunch about how we are working to help build staff culture. Here are some of our first semester survey results. It has been great to see the responses and the positives from our staff. It's exciting to see that our efforts to help our staff feel that their time, their effort, and their feedback are valued, and that they feel that they can come to Ms. Conrad or myself if they have a concern and that we will help them. And honestly, I absolutely love that 98% of our staff feel that Brookwood is a great place to teach and to learn. As a principal who is new to Hamilton, I have absolutely loved my transition here this year. The support from our district team, as well as the Brookwood staff, and the collaboration with the other principals, and them opening up their buildings to me to share all of the great things that they are doing at their schools, has really helped impact our practices at Brookwood, and it helps to influence where we are going as a building. This collaboration is huge, because I've been more of an island in the past as an administrator, and I really value the sharing of ideas so much here in Hamilton. I'm excited about where we're going as a building and the impact that we are working to have on our school community. The second half of this school year is going to be a continued focus on student engagement and discussion, with focusing more on our Cagan structures, analyzing our winter map data, so that we can make sure that all of our students are growing, as well as continuing to build up our staff and our students. We know the importance of making sure that we fill our staff's cups, so that they can fill our students' cups each and every day. So lastly, as it's School Board Recognition Month, we just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your dedication, your time, and your commitment to our students, our staff, and our families. So we have a small token made with love from Mrs. Pearson, our art teacher. She made it with some of our students. So just a small token of our appreciation. Thank you so much.
Well, Eileen and your team, in my prior life and in my work-life, I knew that it was always important to have a team behind you and making sure that that team feels as if they're supported and that you appreciate what they do. So again, as you said, you fill up the teachers and then they take that to the students. And I just have to commend you how important it is, I think, that teachers feel as if they are supported, that they hear you, hear from them, and that they feel comfortable coming to you. So I applaud you on that. And I applaud the whole team. And what some great, you know, I'm a data girl, so what great statistics you've got there. And just keep up the good work.
You have a great staff over there. I'm a little bit familiar with them over the years. You've got some veteran teachers who are really knocking it out. And it's great to see you're giving them the resources even to grow, and then letting them help the younger teachers grow. And I just think you're doing a phenomenal job over there. Keep it up.
Couple of things jumped out at me was the cohort program, doing the cohorts. And that is, we've talked before about teachers learning from teachers. And I mean, the coaches obviously play an important role, but teachers learning and trusting each other enough to walk into classes or let someone come into your class, it's a hard thing to do. And to do that and giving them that feedback, giving those teachers the tools they need, congratulations on the referrals. I know how difficult that is. And that's just indicative of the culture you're creating within the building. So congratulations on that and tell Mrs. Pearson, thank you very much. She's a wonderful art teacher, by the way. Julie Fradd does a really good job of music, too. So those arts people over there are just great. Would you say so, Mr. Holbrook?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, like everyone said, thank you so much for this. This is like super cool. But yes, thank you so much for your time, dedication, and just creativity, and also providing a great environment for the staff over there and definitely the students, but definitely for the staff, because that goes a long way and it shows in the kids. So the staff feels welcome, warm, and they want to be there, happy about being there. And that only, that's only going to spill over to the kids. So we appreciate that you created that environment, and we're excited about what's going on. Again, we're thankful to be able to see that snapshot inside of your building and the great things that's going on. So thank you for being here and coming to present. Again, thanks again for this. This is pretty cool.
Eileen and Whitney, I want to first say thank you publicly for all your leadership. Eileen, I hope that, you know, 12 months ago or eight months ago, you made the leap in faith to come to us. Your years of experience has certainly benefited us. I know that you've gained some things from us, but we've also gained some things from you. And so we're a better district having you in it. So thank you for your leadership. Whitney, thank you for your continued leadership now in two different buildings over several years, at Crawford and now at Brookwood. And you continue to grow, you continue to inspire, and I couldn't be prouder of where we are administratively. One of the things that both of you brought to the attention of the board is the value of coaching. And as Mr. Sprague said, I think a lot of value comes from peer-to-peer instruction and peer-to-peer relationships. And that's really what coaching is in a lot of ways. Building a relationship of trust, building a relationship to break down barriers, and to talk about things that are uncomfortable. It's uncomfortable to say, I need help with something, especially if you've done this for a long time. I've learned I say it every day, because I do. And I think that that's a hard piece. And that's where our coaching comes in. And Brittany and Nikki, you both have been able to do that in your current role. And that's one of the reasons that you're seeing some of the extraordinary numbers on teacher satisfaction and the continued building of a positive culture. So I appreciate everything that everyone is doing over at Brookwood. And once again, the future's very bright for Hamilton and for Brookwood Elementary in particular. Thank you all.
Okay, I don't, there's no public participation, or I've been notified of any. So, Mr. Holbrook?
Yes, President Baker. Tonight in my board comments, I would first like to recognize and thank the members of 17 Strong. I got the opportunity to attend a breakfast last Saturday morning. And at that breakfast, the Hamilton City School District was awarded the Nonprofit of the Year through 17 Strong. And so I want to thank the city and thank all of those responsible for that award. That's a nice reward, and it just shows and it continues to reinforce the presence that we, and the positive presence that we have in the community every single day. Tonight on the agenda, you're going to have information about the Boys and Girls Club that we're recommending for approval. That recommendation is for both before and after-school programming at our elementaries to assist parents. You're also going to have, through our permanent improvement funds, a couple recommendations for new carpet in offices at Hamilton High School freshman campus and the main campus. And then my favorite part of the agenda every single week is our experiences we can give kids. And we have three different field trips recommended this evening. One is our NJROTC program. They are actually going down to Texas to compete. This will be in early June. There won't be any school time missed. But once again, the experiences that these young men and women are receiving is second to none. And we also have two additional field trips for Ridgeway and Crawford Woods to take a field trip to the Newport Aquarium. One of the things that I do want to highlight tonight for your consideration is our 2023 Program of Studies at Hamilton High School. And the reason for the highlight on this is that the menu of options that we have for students is second to none. We have over 22 College Credit Plus or AP course offerings for students. When I started here in 2015, we had zero College Credit Plus courses, zero on campus. Sinclair has been a tremendous partner with us, and you will have a memorandum of understanding up for vote tonight to continue that relationship and continue offering those courses at Hamilton High School. We have course offerings in the Performance and Visual Arts, including band orchestra, choir, ceramics, metals, 3D art, drawing and design, AP Art Studio, AP Music Theory, just to show you the depth in which we go with our course offerings. And it isn't just the core courses. Exposure, once again, I think is critical for students. And having something that might be a genre for certain kids but not others, I think, is really important. We have career tech courses, and you know, those programs include automotive, business, construction, digital media, engineering, exercise science, sports medicine, and the health careers. And you know, our partnership with Butler Tech has allowed us to offer a greater variety of courses than we ever have before. We also have very high-level honors in college prep courses. So you know, whether a kid wants to go to a four-year school, a two-year school, go into the military possibly, goes directly into the workforce, that comprehensive course offering that we have offers students options. And I think that that's our responsibility. I want kids to have every single option available to them upon graduation. And the student and the family need to make the decision on what direction they want to go. But I don't want any door to be shut because they weren't prepared or they didn't have access to programming. And I think that program of studies speaks volumes to those opportunities that we hold, you know, have here in Hamilton. That is my, those are my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Just a comment about the Boys and Girls Club. When I was president of Butler County United Way, I was very, much in favor of having the Boys and Girls Club partner with the school district. And I just want to tell you how happy I am to see that finally happen. So Boys and Girls Club, you guys do a great, have great programming and do great things for our kids. So I'm just, I'm just happy to see that partnership. And I, it's important.
Mr. Holbrook, I would like to add, all these courses you talk about...
Mr. Holbrook, I would like to add, all these courses you talk about, I don't think people actually understand that our system for our 9,000-plus students has something for everybody. We really do. And as they get closer to high school, and they can be prepared to go out into the world, as you said, they can go many directions, and I think that's a good indication of the leadership of you and your team.
Well, our team's done a tremendous job, but I think our philosophy is, it's very important to expose kids, and expose kids to experiences, expose kids to classes, and you know what? They may get exposed to the class, and it really isn't something they want to do, but that's okay, too. But exposure's the key, and having that course catalog be as varied as it is is certainly a step in that direction, and we've had good success with that.
Okay, board, you have before you a consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Okay.
Mr. Frazier.
Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes.
Mrs. Baker.
Yes.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Isgro.
Yes.
Okay, our next meeting will be Thursday, February 9th, beginning at 4:00 PM with executive session. There is no, no business meeting that evening, so I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Isgro. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. This meeting is adjourned.